January twenty first, two thousand fourteen. Not everyone will be prior if we're going to have the implementation of like, from Sarah, or this like, from the other.
This is a prayer for the peace of my head, Dr. Martin Luther King. Now I say to you, life is hard at times, hard as steel. It has its bleakness of the moments, like the ever-flowing waters of the river. Life has its moment of drought and its moments of flood, like the ever-changing seasons. Life has soothing warmth of its summers and the piercing chill of its winters. But if one will hold on, he will discover that God walks with him, and that God is able to lift you from the beginning of despair through the buoyancy of hope, and transform dark and desolate valleys into sunlit paths of inner peace. Good night.
My pleasure. Allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Karen.
Here.
Tom.
Evan.
Here.
Eric.
Zartel.
Trudy.
Gersey.
Here. What are the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on January sixth, two thousand thirteen?
Thank you for the late motion to suspend the meeting, and you have a petition to propose. If I quote that properly, I'm present.
Second.
On page four, the last paragraph, my recollection is that we approved two percent discretionary loans and we did additional personal report, and we forgot a holiday number, so.
Anybody else want to say anything? Anybody have any questions about that? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with that amendment. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor want to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Communications.
I have two. First is from Slute LLC President Ansonette Alish. I would like to notify Tamaki Council with our interest in operating the Tamaki Swimming Pool concession stand for the two thousand fourteen summer season. I am understanding rental fee and the electric for the stand will be my responsibility. Thank you for your consideration and wish now.
The motion to refer that to recreation.
Second.
Motion by Dave and second by Tom to refer that to recreation and duty committee. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Second is from Robert Hurchett, Esquire. Please be advised that I am the solicitor for the borough of Mespa Hone, and I have been requested to inquire as to whether your borough will be interested in entering into a mutual aid agreement with Mespa Hone Borough. At that end, I have prepared and enclosed a draft agreement for your review. Please go over to go over the proposal, let me know if your borough is interested in executing such an agreement, I will await your input.
Chief, I'd like to, I'd like to refer that to the public making, maybe you could meet with them and Mike and.
I just noticed some typo in the company instead of the word and stuff like that.
Yeah, like giving them information on our assurances. I, I think it was necessary.
That's a little like that, and it would probably.
I never saw that on here either.
Motion by Dave and second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Motion by David.
Everybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion?
Just look all around, I got you guys to see more of them. Will they be the same?
I don't know what format they have.
If we can help the committee in ways.
It's all.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Got it? Borough managers' reports.
Okay, I'll get your, I'll put the, what his third material is. Gordon, I opened the bids on January night, and this is for our annual supply of asphalt, asphalt sealers, anti-skip material. And I gave you a couple of copies of these walls. Now with this particular bid, that's a little out there, but for these, we have to calculate the cost of material that we're going to take off. How do you supply the board?
It's in the back of your package.
It's actually in the back of the package. So you see the list of, there's thirteen of items that we have bid, and there's a triangle supply, so we'll see a whole pack, anti-skip material. As we do this, we can allow this to happen. Now there's some items we ask for delivery products, pickup products, so in case of the pickup price, Penn Dock has been awarded, we're a grant, and follow to calculate our cost to board your plant. And that's, they have a certain amount calculated for vehicles, we use our wages, and we factor in the time. At any rate, we have two bids missions, we might ask for and possible materials. And like I said, I calculated the whole cost, so the low bids will not necessarily be our recommendation for award because of that, the whole cost calculation. I put an asterisk by the bid, and our recommendation for award is to ask council to consider awarding the, the item.
Make sure you approve off the item table on the good tab for Kevin Seck.
Sorry.
Motion by Thomas, second by Dave to award the list of the ones recommended by Kevin on the good tab. Says seven of the, of the items are worth a possible material six and one. Anybody have any questions about the motion?
See, I got one. Kevin, there's two items listed compared where we would pick up these possible materials. How, how often do you do that?
It depends on which item.
Those are thirty times a super pay basketball and other times of super pay basketball, or against the baseball course, you can have the top course. For every time, a big part will be roughly six or seven trips. Thirty times.
Okay.
And a hundred, it'll vary, but it's trying to average seventy, ten trips.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about the bids?
This is about a hundred thousand dollars.
No.
And they are just estimates too, or not actually held to these amounts, but these estimated volumes, we have all the names, and that's the price for.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. To make sure that the minutes reflect specifically the risk of contract with the end of the present.
Now, in line with this, what we normally do at this time is consider the, this resolution. It's for price adjustment for the materials. This is something we've been doing for the last several years. It's meant to help offset the water fluctuations in asphalt. But what it does is, it gives the, it gives the supplier the ability to adjust this price as the water changes. If, if, if price drops for ten percent, it's red, it goes up for ten percent, and that's, that's, there's a couple reasons for this, so Penn Dock has been recommending that we consider this resolution. Because it encourages people to bid and to increase the price. If we don't have some point of this, then they have to estimate what the price of asphalt will be the rest of the year, and so we're going to have to help figure out if I price into their, their bid. So in other words, it may, to offset those fluctuations.
How about motion to announce the resolution for price adjustments?
Second. The motion by Tom and second by Dave to announce the resolution for price adjustment for materials. Anybody have any questions or comments? This has worked out for us over the years. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, on the roll call, vote.
Karen.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Base.
Yes.
Gersey.
Yes.
And just a couple other announcements. You probably noticed the sewer project, this is Torres Street, is finished. We'll have to keep my estimations until it's pretty final, chance to store it for asphalt. Also, you might have noticed the park of these, and the rest, I hope you can find some of them, we sent four back, and the rest, I guess all the thirteen, would be around the street. So they're out there, they're out there now, it just has one block by the majestic patch to do.
When, when will you start installing?
Those have to be certified, and I'll try and do them this week and get them out right over here, and they'll all be out except the ones for the Grinch project.
So then you'll start installing them in?
I'm sorry, Tom?
You'll start installing them in the spring?
Already, already. They're out there.
Well, meters are on the strip, on the street.
On the street, has a mystery.
All but, I think thirteen or five majestic.
Thirteen by the history, and the square ones that'll win the grid pride if you have.
So they're, they're out there now, and.
That didn't take you long.
Already too jammed.
Very.
Anything else, Kevin?
That's what you get when you get the lowest bid. Also, our lighting project is done, but we'll prove three more projects which may start as early as this week, actually. But all of the others are completed, except for, there's a, a third party that put in a fire, say, around and inspect them before, before sign off on. So that's also finished. And, I guess, the other thing I had is, we got a letter from the Schoop County Tax Pay Bureau about a property that's in the pository. You should all have a copy of this. They have a bid for twenty seven East Elm Street. The owner's David Orocho, bidder is Deeds R. Us from Las Vegas, Nevada. Dan and I have been checking on this company, and what we're being told by the county is, this company is owned by a gentleman called Francis Divizna, who bid on three properties last May. We approved them, because we couldn't find any fault with the bidder, but the sale they go through, because the school didn't approve it, we have to, we have to check on why, that is. But apparently, this is the person that owns that company, and incidentally, he, this, this same property is one that he bid on last year, but like I said, the sale didn't go through, so apparently, he's placing a bid up there, a corporation name this time. The county isn't asking for a response till February fourteenth, so we do have a little bit of time to do some, some more checking on this individual, so he has any corrections or violations.
Maybe we find out where the school district didn't approve it.
That's something I'd like to find out. We just found out that he is the principal of this corporation.
The corporation is called Deeds R. Us, and their mailing address is a UPS store in Las Vegas. I think that's enough to say we don't want to sell it.
Yeah, that makes it significant.
They're not, they're not, they're an LLC, so they're a limited liability corporation, they have no registration in, in Pennsylvania with the Department of State, which they would be required to do to business in, in the Department of State. Even if they're incorporated in another, in another state, we should still have, they should still be on file, in Pennsylvania and the Department of State, and their.
So we should disapprove of it.
I, I would recommend that we disapprove of it, unless you, unless you could think of a reason why we should approve it, if it's only a guy who turned down last time, opened up a P.O. box in Las Vegas and bid on the same property again. And I, I don't see it a good ending.
On the motion, Karen?
I will.
I take a motion, you know, we, you know, it is a pository sound.
Second. Motion by Tom, second by Justin. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody?
Is there a building, is there a building on this property?
Yes, I think yes.
And what's the street?
There are, there are, there are violations with the structure.
And what's the street address again?
Twenty seven East Elm Street.
Doesn't anybody want to buy twenty seven?
He's bidding seven hundred and forty dollars.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
That's all I have.
Thanks. Police chief.
I have a question.
Committee reports, neighborhoods, downtown, and storage district committee.
I have four motions. The first motion is to approve a certificate appropriateness to change an existing double sided sign on one sixteen East Broad Street.
Second. Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Police chief.
I have a question.
Committee reports, neighborhoods, downtown, and storage district committee.
I have four motions. The first motion is to approve a certificate appropriateness for demolition of a rear addition at forty four West Broad Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Another motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for demolition of an emergency generator at East End Fire Company, five five six East Broad Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Another motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for demolition of a rear addition at forty four West Broad Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for demolition of a rear addition at forty four West Broad Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
And the last one, a motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
And the last one, a motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
A motion to approve a certificate appropriateness for installation of emergency generator at the water department garage, one twenty South Greenwood Street.
Second.
Motion by Justin, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Anything else on the other committee? Any other committee report? Any other committees? Okay.
Is there anybody from the floor that wishes to address council? Please stand up, state your name and address for the record.
Tracy, seven twenty four Respot Street, Tamaki, PA. Thank you for recognizing me, Chairman. So I have two very quick issues. One is just a clarification based on the last meeting when someone from the floor asked if I had sent in a, sent in my interest in being, to be appointed to the authority. I think the answer was that I had sent in a letter of interest. The letter in question that was sent to the borough council came as a result of a vote by the borough authority to recommend to council that, that I would be, be appointed with five year term. Council decided not to honor that, which is their right. The second issue, I think, is a little more serious. I really, I really fought long and hard before coming here because it is a kind of a serious situation as far as I'm concerned. I take issue with Councilman Kara for some alleged statements that he made in reference to two members of the water authority, that he stated that they were very uncooperative when dealing with issues related to the water treatment plant. These, the alleged statements that he made are certainly without merit, but more importantly is, in two thousand thirteen, Mr. Kara attended not one water authority meeting. In fact, I think it's safe to say, I've been on the water authority for over ten years, and at least in the last five years, he has never attended one meeting. So all of his statements that he made in reference to being myself and one other member, being uncooperative, is certainly without merit. For example, I, for example, how unsound and biased these alleged statements are. April of two thousand thirteen, the water authority approved with no objections to start the update of the water treatment plant. In fact, the engineers in charge agreed to go forward and bill us when we had the money, because we had no money in order to cover those. In July, we approved a letter outlining treatment plant upgrades for approximately four point four million dollars, which approximately one million was for the water treatment plant. This was unanimously approved by the water authority. I personally made the motion, I think it was the following month, to go forward with a nine point two million dollar loan, four point four, which will be used for the, for various projects in the, in the water treatment area, and the other, of course, is to pay some outstanding loans by Penn Vest. Certainly, time, time does not permit me to, to review all the things, the good things that the water authority did in concert. Only, only the time constraints here, and I'm sure I just want to get one point across. I was replaced on the borough authority, which oversees the sewers, sewers treatment plant, even though, as I previously stated, the authority unanimously recommended another term, another term. I think this may be the first time, I'm not certain, that a recommendation by either the water authority or the borough authority was not recognized. And this is a little bit shaky what I'm going to say, but it appears to me that someone has a hidden agenda which would not be in the best interest of the people of Tamaki, because they're going to be the ones that are going to have to foot the bill for this nine million dollars. I certainly hope this is not the reason, but it puzzles me how a member who is alleged to have been unproductive in the water authority, and then is removed from the borough authority. And I thank you for my time.
Thank you, and I know you've had many years of service on both authorities, John. I do think you've done a nice job. Our authorities are run really well with a really good water system, with a really good sewer system, and it's because the borough works really well with the authorities and with their workforce and the engineers to do that. Unfortunately, there can only be one appointment, and the appointment's made by council, not, not by the authority, and those are difficult decisions to make when you have to make, make appointments to authorities, and it's, it's something that, that the borough council has to do. Can I respond to something?
I understand, Mr. Chairman, but no one, no one in this room here, no one in this room here knows the performance and the energy that's put forth on these various committees. Those people that recommend to the borough council, I'm not, I'm just not speaking to myself. Anyone that's, anyone that's recommended by the authority has done so because they want those people on there, and they're very productive. For someone to say, and I really take exception to this, those statements that, that I would ever put that sewers treatment plant or the Tamaki people in jeopardy for getting water is totally ridiculous, totally ridiculous. And I take exception to that.
Okay, can I respond to that? Back in May, I was called from somebody from the water plant, and they wanted to talk to me. So I went up to the water plant, and they says, they told me that this plant is ready to shut down, that it's on the brink of, it's in need of dire repairs. Okay, so I took that and I went back to work, and I knew somebody who worked on the Cleveland, Ohio Water Authority, and I asked him if he would come over to our treatment plant and take a look at it. He went over to the treatment plant with me, and the data system that was operating it, it was ready to fail. He showed me the controls, which I understand controls from my work at Air Products. There were two sets of controls, the primary and the secondary. The man at the water plant told me that the primary system had, they've been putting parts in it from the secondary system because they're corroding. He said, now we have a situation where we don't have any backup parts for this. If this part fails, this plant is going down, and we're going to have a tough time to keep water supply to the borough. That's what I was told by somebody from the water plant.
Mr. Kara, you were exactly right. The, the operator from the treat, water treatment plant appeared at a water treatment meeting, at a water authority meeting, and told the, the water authority how important it was to start making some moves up there. The big issue in this whole picture here, if it is, that we needed over, we needed at least one million dollars just for the water treatment alone, not even putting consideration everything else. After looking, first of all, we could not get the money because we had an outstanding
In fact, I think it's safe to say, I've been on the Water Authority for over ten years. And at least in the last five years, he has never attended one meeting. So, all of his statements that he made, in reference to being myself and one other member, being uncooperative, is certainly without merit. For example, I, for example, how unsound and biased he alleged statements are. April of two thousand thirteen, the Water Authority approved with no objections to start the update of the water treatment plant. In fact, the engineers in charge agreed to go forward and bill us when we had the money, because we had no money in order to cover those. In July, we approved a letter outlining treatment plant upgrades for approximately four point four million dollars, which approximately one million was for the water treatment plant. This was unanimously approved by the Water Authority. I personally made the motion, I think it was the following month, to go forward with a nine point two million dollar loan. Four point four, which will be used for the, for various projects in the water treatment area. And the other, of course, is to pay some outstanding loans by Penn Vest. Certainly, time, time does not permit me to, to review all the things, the good things that the Water Authority did in concert. Only, only the time constraints here, and I'm sure I just want to get one point across. I was replaced on the Borough Authority, which oversees the sewerage treatment plant, even though, as I previously stated, the Authority unanimously recommended another term, another term. I think this may be the first time, I'm not certain, that a recommendation by either the Water Authority or the Borough Authority was not recognized. And, this is a little bit shaky what I'm gonna say, but it appears to me that someone has a hidden agenda, which would not be in the best interest of the people of Tamaka, because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to foot the bill for this nine million dollars. I certainly hope this is not the reason, but it puzzles me how a member who is alleged to have been unproductive in the Water Authority, and then is removed from the Borough Authority. All right, thank you for my time.
Thank you, and I know you've had many years of service on both authorities, John. I do think you've done a nice job. Our authorities are run really well with a really good water system, with a really good sewer system. And it's because the Borough works really well with the authorities, and with their workforce, and the engineers to do that. Unfortunately, there can only be one appointment, and the appointment's made by council, not by the authority. And those are difficult decisions to make when you have to make appointments to authorities, and it's something that, that the Borough Council has to do. Can I respond to something?
I understand, Mr. Chair, but no one, no one in this room here, no one in this room here knows the performance and the energy that's put forth on these various committees. Those people that recommend to the Borough Council, I'm not, I'm just not speaking to myself. Anyone that's, anyone that's recommended by the Authority has done so because they want those people on there, and they're very productive. For someone to say, and I really take exception to this, those statements that I would ever, uh, put that sewerage treatment plant or the Tamaka people in jeopardy for getting water, is totally ridiculous. Totally ridiculous. And I take exception to that.
Okay, can I respond to that? Back in May, I was called from somebody from the water plant. They wanted to talk to me. So I went up to the water plant, and he says, he told me that this plant is ready to shut down. That it's on the brink of, it's in need of dire repairs. Okay, so I took that and I went back to work, and I knew somebody who worked on the Cleveland, Ohio Water Authority. And I asked him if he would come over to our treatment plant and take a look at it. He went over to the treatment plant with me, and the data system that was operating it, it was ready to fail. He showed me the controls, which I understand controls from my work at Air Products. There were two sets of controls, the primary and the secondary. The man at the water plant told me that the primary system had, they'd been putting parts in it from the secondary system, because they're corroding. He said, now we have a situation where we don't have any backup parts for this. If this part fails, this plant is going down, and we're gonna have a tough time to keep water supplied to Borough. That's what I was told by somebody from the water plant.
Mr. Care, you were exactly right. The operator from the water treatment plant appeared at a water treatment meeting, at a Water Authority meeting, and told the, the Water Authority how important it was to start making some moves up there. The big issue in this whole picture here, if it is, that we needed over, we needed at least one million dollars just for the water treatment alone, not even putting consideration everything else. After looking, first of all, we could not get the money, because we had an outstanding loan of, uh, I don't know what it's for, a couple million dollars. So, Mr. Bowe and Dale Gladfelter start putting together a plan in early year. In fact, they just said, we didn't have the money to pay him to go forward. So, you don't borrow nine point million, nine, nine million dollars in two or three weeks. One bank won't even give. We had to get a couple of banks. But, you know, that's, I mean, going back here is, is everyone, there wasn't one single motion in the entire year that was turned down because of lack of cooperation. Everything that was ever brought before that Water Authority in reference to upgrades was approved. So I don't know where these alleged statements came from, that I was one of them, that interfered. And what really upsets me is that it, it would have resulted in, in posing a danger to not only the treatment plant, but the Tamaka. That's totally ridiculous, honest to God. I would never, ever do that, and there's no, there's nothing in all the minutes that you can read for the year that you'll ever see that I was ever a part of that. So, I have to believe that there's something else going on. What, what else is there?
Okay, let me continue. Second of all, I, I don't have any hidden agenda.
... say, Water Authority, people are complaining, and you would've got the same answer as I just gave you. People are complaining that nothing's being done in that water treatment plant. The whole Water Authority knows that.
Okay, let me, could I answer that? I don't think me coming to a Water Authority either would have changed your position of voting not, not to move this thing forward. If I would've attended one meeting...
Whoa, where'd you get that? Where did you get that, my position of voting not to go forward? Where does that come from?
Okay, after I talked to the person at the water plant, I talked to other people on the Water Authority. Okay, I didn't take this lightly, all right? I want, and I, the reason I didn't vote for you for this position is because of these reasons. And I'll tell you what, public media.
Well, you voted for me. You voted against, you voted not to have me reappointed, not on the Water Authority, you voted for me on the Borough Authority. Nothing to do with the Water Authority.
Right, well...
So I get, is that like a penalty, because you didn't do it over here? Well, I don't, I don't understand, because you're, you're saying that I, first of all, all your, all your information is, all your information is...
Well, I have something to add as well. Tom Care called me, I think it was two days ago, and not, and I told him before he started his comments, because he did say one comment to me on the phone. And after that call, and I told him I wanted to hear it in a public meeting, you were beginning to say something about somebody, some people like this stay on for years and years and years. Can you continue what you were gonna finish saying to me on the phone?
Yeah, yeah, these appointments that we make are for five-year terms, and are very serious. Okay, we're putting people on in positions that they will be there for five years. So when you vote for somebody for this, you need to have some background and some reasons to make your decision. Okay? You took a vote, you, you said, no, you didn't know what was going on.
I did know what was going on, because I questioned beforehand.
Okay, all right.
I questioned beforehand.
And I'll go back to my statement. It, it, it's council's responsibility to appoint people to the Authority. I mean, the block stops here, we, we, we appoint people. We don't have to have reasons for appointing people or not appointing people. You would hope that council puts, council would put some thought into getting good people. We're always encouraging good people to put their names in. You've served well for many years, and, and, you know, I could see some, some bad feelings here, and I'm very sorry. I, I think the person that we put on the Authority and the men appointed, and he's a good man, and will do a good job. And, and I would hope that the Authority is committed to, to, to make the improvement and do the things that we need to do.
I have just one final statement, Mr. Chairman, is that Mr. Care is not being truthful when he say, when he's stating that I was against the upgrades of the water treatment plant.
John, Tracy, Mr. Care is a very truthful and honest person.
Tom Care is not truthful, because you're saying something that's not true. That's how you, that's how you'd be untruthful.
What's not true?
Well, and again, I, you know, I can see that there's a, there's a difference of opinion here.
I talked to people on the Authority about it. How you were voting and how, and how, and how you...
The Water Authority approved the other member a hundred percent. So what you're saying is, the members of the Water Authority did not tell the truth when they voted unanimously to appoint the other member that was not, that was not appointed. That's what you're saying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else on the floor wish to address council?
Yes.
You state, state anything, just for the record, please.
Kenny Mallor, twenty seven Borough Center Street, you know me, right?
I do.
Well, my...
You had the pictures of the dog dirt last year.
Yeah, well, my dream come true, like, well, it wasn't my dream, but, um, well, my question is with that, twenty seven Center Street, the property is condemned. I ended up with the last deep freeze with Brode Waterlands. Okay, and what I did to try to solve the problem was, I had called the owner of the property, Mary Henning, and he said she was working. I had called her son, and he said, oh, I can't get there till o'clock. So, okay, he came up, and the reason I called him, I called Tamaka Police, and they gave me contact numbers. And, uh, police and all that, and she's all mad at me now. She's coming down on Tamaka Police about him. But anyways, she gave me maybe an hour and a half to try to go in there and saw her. And I couldn't, and had time. So, what had happened was, she said, she kicked me out of the house. She told Tommy Stenell that I cursed her on the phone and everything like, which I did. And I just needed to get in and get, one day was in there Saturday morning, get my water line. Her pipes were never drained right, they're getting busted up, the house is condemned. Now, my question is, and to Kevin, I'm supposed to maintain my water line from the curb in? Am I correct or not?
That's correct.
From the curb?
Under normal circumstances, yes.
Right, now, because it runs through that house, and she threw me out of there. No, I'm not allowed, I can't maintain my water line. I, I, if something happens, what? I'm not allowed in there. I had to get a plumber, and he agreed to that, and he got the key, and he went in in the morning, and he put heaters in there, heated the basement up, and went with the hot, with the heat gun. Finally got my water line up. Thank God mine is split and bust. But, that was five hundred fifty dollars. It cost me five hundred fifty dollars. It was a Sunday, so I went all day Saturday. I'm paying for water service, and I'm not getting it, when that happens. So, my suggestion is, somebody gotta run a water line up the alley, something, so I don't have to deal with that. What, what's, what's going on with that property? I had to bring a generator down. My buddy Kirk, you know Kirk? Got a generator up him, ran his lights, ran the heat gun, ran, you know, ran everything in there. Five hundred fifty dollars, my time, all weekend blowing away. Okay? Now, we're getting in the cold snap again. What happens? What we did was we took the pipe down, we wrapped it. This guy here will tell you, last time he was in, what's his name?
Chip.
Chip. You were in there, Chip, when I was down, down and up the pipes, and I wrapped it again. I mean, what, what am I supposed to?
Did you heat trace it?
Well, typically...
I have no control over that.
Well, actually, usually, in an ideal situation, you would have, if you share a water line or a sewer line, you would have an easement that would give you the right to access it.
You told me this, Mr. Burson, before. But, now I'm thrown out of there, and I'm not allowed in there. Because she says I cursed her, which I didn't do. Okay, but we, we, we gotta solve a problem here, and what's the answer?
The answer would be to run your own water line to the main, and, and get your water line out.
Well, wait a minute. You mean, you mean I gotta pay to dig up the street to rent a water line? Why would that pay?
Uh, because we're only responsible to a stop. We run into this situation, well, more than we care to. It's great when neighbors work together, but when you run into a...
Okay, here's another problem, here's another problem. If I'm supposed to maintain my water line, the property is condemned. Legally, I'm not allowed in there, nobody's allowed in there. Suppose something would happen where the plumber fell, those sort of steps, because the house is condemned. Something, who are they gonna sue? They're gonna sue the owner of that property, they're gonna sue me, and they're gonna sue the Borough.
Well, just because a property has a sign on it doesn't mean you're not allowed in there. It depends.
It says no one will trespass, it says right on.
But contractors are allowed to access condemned properties. There aren't, there is access allowed for condemned houses.
So, it's okay, so every time that happens, I gotta pay five hundred dollars?
No, could I make a suggestion for you?
Sure.
Your plumber should have heat traced and insulated the line.
Tom, there's no, there, there is no electricity in the house. What am I supposed to do, run an extension cord to Tommy Hartz? Is that legal, run an extension cord from my house over there? I don't think so.
Yes, it is.
I don't think so.
Can I, can I tell you?
And speaking of Tommy too, with the property, which I complained about this before, with the fire hazard that's there, it's happening. Tommy's complaining, Mr. Tom's complaining, fire hazard that's there.
Can I tell you one solution to your problem? If you put heat tracing on that pipe, it's gonna have an electrical connection for a plug on the end of it. You need to put that plug on your property and plug it into an electrical outlet, all right? And it's gonna keep warmth in the pipe, and then you insulate it, and it's not gonna freeze.
Okay, the only way I can do that is dig a concrete backyard up, dig her concrete up.
No, you put this inside the house.
What do you want me to run an extension cord, over the wall, through the water? Is that what you want me to do?
Don't you live next, well, you don't live next door, it's not...
No, 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 no.
Back to back.
No, I had to run a cord to get power in my house. Is that Tommy, is that legal?
Not the extension cord.
Extension cord, hmm, to get power.
Yeah, that, that property was a problem when it was full. And it, even though it's empty and some of the problems are gone, there, it's still an issue.
Well, what, what, what are the solutions?
Well, certainly the access to the property is something that... You either had the legal right to go in there, and it might, some easements even have cost sharing. They might even spell out who pays for these types of things.
Now, this, now, I, I pay every year or something. Now, okay, save money if I gotta bring my own water line up. Can I dig up the street? I have access to the back hole. Probably not, can I?
Well, we, we will work with you to, to your partnership.
I have, I have access to the back hole, I can run the back hole. I get, is, is it gonna be right for me digging a Tamaka Borough street up? I don't think so.
You'd have to get permission, you'd have to work with our...
Yeah, how's that gonna work?
You have to get a street open, probably, you have to do a...
In the meantime, I gotta pay five hundred dollars every time my water line freezes, until that gets up.
Let your pool water run this week.
I have done that, I have done that. I've done that, still have it. You better understand, when it gets down below zero, and there's no heat in that house, and then I can't get in there and access, stop my water line?
You're not going to allow in that situation, it's a whole situation.
So, what are we, just supposed to take that girl and just, just keep on paying her? I mean, come on, seriously. Let me draw one more thing at it. It was no problem for the Tamaka Borough to run a water line from Borough Street to the train station for free. Am I right or wrong? Train station has four point two million dollars in the bank, don't pay taxes. Come on, be real. I'm asking you to run from Center Street up the alley and make everybody in them three houses there connect. And bring it to the house, and then we'll connect it. And I'm willing to pay for that. Bring it to Kirk for me, and I'll connect it. I have no problem paying for that. But now I'm not gonna pay to come up the alley. It's not fair to me, to run a water line up. That, that should be the Borough's responsibility. I got a problem, I mean, all, all those three properties, they run water lines for boarding house, they run a water line through it. I mean, it's...
Do I have to go back there and come from Center Street?
Pardon me?
So, do they?
You understand what I'm saying, a boarding house, Charlie Otter Rizzi, they run through from center, back, through all them buildings, and three buildings, they run back. I mean, why should I be responsible for that? Bring it to my curb, and I have no problem paying, paying in my house. I have no problem, none. I mean, it's something that, it, it's, I mean, it probably ain't no problem for a boarding house, because Charlie Otter Rizzi on the front and me on the back, keeping our heater. But that property is condemned in front of me, I mean, my hands are tied, man. What am I supposed, I'm supposed to take care of my water line, I'm trying to.
Do you know if you have an easement on the deed that gives you the right to access it? Do you know, do you have...
I, I don't know that, but it doesn't matter, I'm not allowed in the place.
Well, no, if it's on your deed, you're allowed in. Yeah, that's what, that's what an easement is, it grants you permission to build access to do certain things, and...
Is she gonna give me a key so I can get in and do what I gotta do?
You could, you could make her give you access, if you have an easement. That's what it is.
At any time?
Well, not at any time, but...
Well, this is a problem like this. She gave me three o'clock in the afternoon, it gets dark at four o'clock, there are no lights in the house. I mean, all I'm trying to do is, I mean, my water's frozen, I mean, they condemn my house for no water.
You need to keep your water running.
I do, sir, I do. I do, I kept it running, and it froze last time. When it got below zero, it froze.
What we'll do is, we'll have Kevin talk to the Water Authority and our, and see if there's...
I would, please, like, something be done, man, I, I can't. I mean, five hundred fifty dollars later, I work every day, that's why I was late to get here. I didn't get home from work till now. Man, five hundred fifty bucks out of your pocket for the weekend?
And this is on top of all the stuff you put up with for the last couple of years with that problem?
Right, exactly. Please, come on, guys, help me. You know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm being nice. I'm not being smart, I'm just saying what should be done. Whatever, I mean, and I'm not throwing things up to you, but you did for the train station. Built for me. I pay taxes, my water bills pay all the time, I'm never behind, on time, it's... Come on, guys, I mean, when I don't have no water, it's service, then I'm like, then I'm paid? Am I right or wrong? Right or wrong? Nobody wants to answer you, right?
It's not an easy solution to, for, and the, the train stations, and I don't wanna get into the details of the train station, but it was a different situation there, just because of where the property...
I see now, did the Tamaka Borough run a water line for the train station? Yes, they did.
And then what, there was no water access there for the train station?
Yeah, well, there was no water access through somebody else's property for me. So, we need some more water. I don't know, digging through my foundation, do what I gotta do to hook up, and bring it up to my street, bring it up to my curb.
We'll have Kevin talk to the Water Authority, see if there's...
Kevin, I appreciate if you will do something about that. Fair enough.
And can we derive a thing when we find out what's true?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on the floor wish to address council? Please stand up and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Kathy Miedemacher, I live at three twenty-two One Ninety Street. Over, actually, New Year's Day, for a period of three days, we had a block sewer line in our house. It got to a point where no water would go down at all. I mean, nothing, not even a pot of water. We had tried to unblock ourselves, and we had to call somebody in to unblock it, and they had to, they dug up our basement. Here, it's the main line, because it went all the way up to the main line, the roots from the main line are catching everything that's coming out of our pipe. Eight years ago, it was about eight, eight or nine, we had the same problem. But they didn't have to dig up our basement. But, um, we put root stuff down that, last time we had the problem, the Borough put down crystals to peel the roots coming in, and the problem solved. But now it came back after eight, nine years. Because they set a camera down, we could see right down to the main line that the roots are catching everything. So I don't know if anybody got, anybody else, I don't know how the lines are actually up on there, but they know, it's like, because we, that's what we did for apartment out last time, our, from our house up to the main line is like ninety feet. And that's where it's blocked. So if I could get somebody up there, like soon, to get crystals down there to peel those roots in that sewer line?
Is it the main line that's blocked?
It's the, well, it might be unblocked now, because we have somebody up there, it costs us over eight hundred dollars to get it cleared.
You're on Mongol Street, right?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with, with that, I'll have to talk to a few...
See, do you know where the handicap sign is up there? Around the Sherp Turm, when you come down Close Street, it is a handicap sign, on the tree side? It, it's like right, the animal thing is right behind his vehicle where he parks. Can't use a car.
I don't understand how roots, if they're all roots growing to the main, how it affected your viral under your basement floor?
I know, but it was blocked, right? It was, and thank God I had a drain in my basement for my washing. I would've had, last time it happened, I had that much rustle weaved in my basement.
You, you have a cleanout, you could explain?
We never had one, but we dug it in one end of the house.
Is that what they did to floor up?
Yeah, because we couldn't find out where it was blocked. So they had to dig the, the floor up, and then they put a cleanout in it, after it was unblocked.
What's your number again about?
Three twenty-two One Ninety Street.
I'm not familiar with these situations, I'll have to talk to a few people. You must have floor drains or something.
There's two floor drains, but, I said, I could smell sewage, like, that odor down the basement. This is like Sunday night, Monday I was down to do wash, and there was like that much toilet paper and sewage stuff flowing in my drain, come from the washing. And I said, we tried to get it unblocked to a point, but then it just kept on like you, go down so far, it didn't stop dead. And that's the point where no water was moving at all then. So we had to call somebody in.
So if our roots weren't, we don't take care of that sewer line?
Yeah, no, they said they went right out to the main sewer. And it's the main sewer where the roots are coming up, and they're catching, because the whole one side is all trees.
Was it, wait, wait a second. I think I wonder if they would be part of, or, it was like, what plumber did you...
Danny Regal.
Maybe we could check with Dan, he's got that working for this situation.
No, you, you couldn't, you washed the toilet or gave a shower, nothing. Thank you.
Anybody else on the floor wish to address council?
Kathy Mirelli, one sixty-three Alti Grove. Last week when I was here, or two weeks ago or wherever we were here, back to the Water Authority and the Sewer Authority, I asked, did you advertise? Because I just sat here and listened to the discussion. And you said, no. And then you said, as you said tonight, you didn't have to, and that it's council's right, within your right to put on there who you want, and that you, you put good people, good people on there. And so I, you know, I sit here as a tax-paying citizen and, and as a former councilwoman, and I think that, I don't understand, if you're, especially if you're replacing someone that there's been questions about, and I listened and, you know, to Mr. Tracy, and I think that your actions support his claims that there's a hidden agenda. Because I would think you would wanna advertise, that you would want to put on those authorities, and no offense to who you've put on, certainly, but wouldn't you wanna advertise and find the very best if you have all these problems? Wouldn't, I've gone to those, the, not recently, but over the years, I think it's no secret that I've been very interested in the cancer cluster here, and I've been involved with all that, I've worked with Dr. Baddick. And so I wonder, why wouldn't you wanna put scientific people? We have scientific people that live within this Borough, and know them. So, I, I think it looks poor. It, it's, it's, it's not good for this council to especially then put family members into these positions. And I think it supports Mr. Tracy's claim that there's a hidden agenda. Thanks.
I, I would disagree with you, but I appreciate your... Anybody else on the floor? Here's your floor.
Just to add, to touch on, this afternoon myself, which I also had a chance to review this... the district law, which I expect to have by November for the weekend, and it looks great that it's not going to be, with the recent board that we updated earlier from last summer. Excited to be able to do it for the week. Other business, we've been working on this, agreeing to the police department throughout several of the local major municipalities, kind of like they're too complete at this point, you know, working on, we did have a request for the, by right, is that?
Fire.
That's for fire, okay, I apologize. So yes, there's still, I guess, previous causes, we're still working on, for, and...
Solicitors report. We have the reports of the various borough departments.
Motion to the self-commission.
Motion by Dave, a second by Andrew, second by the borough departments. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Guys have it. Unfinished business?
Building claims?
I approved the bills to anger Tom Care, and they seem to be in order and should be paid.
For a second, a second.
Great, yes. Waiting for the motion to cover the...
Pay the bills.
Motion by Tom, a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Guys have it. Any new business? We need executive session tonight, talking about personnel matters. Go by Dave, second by Justin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Guys have it. So we'll go to executive session before, Chairman.